Dave Larson.
Hi, Mr. Larson. Go ahead.
Thank you. Chairman Jones, members of the board. My name is Dave Larson. I'm a senior vice president for First Transit. I've been with the company over 25 years. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the board and the RTC staff. This is an incredible opportunity, and we're very excited about it. Our operation teams have already hit the ground running, meeting with staff, the unions, and we are prepared to immediately commence our startup activities. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to approve the agenda. It is in order, ready for your approval.
We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great. Okay, Chairman, the next item is to receive the CEO report. So I'm proud to share a few highlights from the American Public Transportation Marketing and Communications Conference that was held last week. Our city and agency hosted the committee's first in-person conference in over three years with support from Robertson and Partners, Outfront Media, and Vector Media. We welcomed more than 350 of our transit peers in classic Vegas style. From Elvis and Cirque du Soleil performers to transit, bike share, and walking tours, we showed them what our great city is all about. Additionally, our marketing communications team shared their expertise on partnerships, marketing new services, and community engagement. While sharing our knowledge, we also learned about best practices and challenges facing other markets. I want to thank our chairman for his support in helping to open the conference as well as Angela and her team for representing the RTC in our community. I can safely say, we set the bar high. We heard nothing but great feedback. People really loved being here in Las Vegas, loved exploring our city, and we look forward to hosting them again. Next, we would like to recognize Noah Astor, an operator from our contractor, Keolis. And to present this item, we have a video prepared by Deputy CEO Francis Julian.
Thank you, MJ. Now we're celebrating an operator from Keolis, Noah Astor. Noah has been working for Keolis for the last six months. While doing his route, Noah saw an elderly woman that was followed by two individuals. He immediately stopped his bus to make sure she was in a safe place. He then called the authorities and converted her. The authorities actually arrested the two men, and then Noah took it upon himself to bring her to her final destination. For that great insight and that amazing driver, let's go and celebrate Noah. Hi, Noah. Yeah, hi, I'm Francis Julian from the RTC. How are you? Good. I want to present you with the Crystal Bus on behalf of our CEO MJ Maynard and the Board of Commissioners for the excellent customer comments you've got and for helping that elderly woman the other day. So, thank you on behalf of the RTC. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank the RTC board for recognizing me and my driver team, my manager, and the trainers I had in Keolis for helping me make me the driver I am today. And I just enjoy driving around and helping people I can help.
Is Noah here? No, doesn't look like. Let's give him a round of applause and wave.
Today, we are also recognizing Mark Villard. He's a mechanic from Keolis. And to present Mark's award, here's another video presentation from Francis.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we're celebrating a mechanic from Keolis, Mark Villard. Mark has been working for Keolis for over 16 years. Mark is an expert on everything electric and electronic. He actually takes his time off to look at bulletins to make sure he's always up to date on the new technology. Mark recently had a training on hydrogen fuel cell. Already, he's looking at bulletins, reach out to the manufacturers, to other transit agencies, to make sure he was able to help his fellow coworkers. So let's go and celebrate Mark. Hey, Mark. Oh, sorry, first of all, how are you, man? It's been a while. Mark, I'm here to present you with the Crystal Bus.
Oh, thank you.
You know why? Because exactly what you're doing, being the best of the best in electronic and electrics, and getting your training on hydrogen fuel cell, always wanting to know more, and keeping our buses on the road. So on behalf of MJ Maynard, our CEO, and our Board of Commissioners, I present to you the Crystal Bus.
Thank you. I just want to thank the RTC for giving me this award. I just want to thank Keolis, my coworkers, for helping me out to diagnose and repair these buses. And I'm really excited to be working on the hydrogen bus. And just really excited about it and looking forward to more challenges.
Is Mark here? All right, Mark. Thank you for your leadership.
And next, we're going to be recognizing two RTC employees for Superstars of the Quarter. For our first award, we're happy to recognize Salma Flores. She's an administrative specialist with our Streets and Highways team. Salma has worked with the Streets and Highways Department to streamline several processes, ultimately improving team efficiency. Her efforts have helped reduce review time on contracts, improve the agenda writing process for committee meetings, and expedited invoicing procedures to bring funds back to the RTC to apply to other community roadway projects. She's amazing. Salma, thanks for all your work. Although she's here today, so Salma, please stand up.
Salma, please stand up. Let's give her a round of applause.
And another superstar of the quarter. This is Mackenzie Combs Emery, and she's from our media marketing department. Mackenzie was the project manager behind the RTC's 30th anniversary celebration in December. She planned and pulled together all moving parts and worked with several departments and external partners to host a press conference featuring drivers and mechanics who had been with the RTC for 30 years. Her efforts resulted in an uplifting positive event that generated more than $400,000 worth of publicity for the RTC. And now she's working on an event each month to highlight and celebrate this momentous agency milestone. And so we're going to watch Deputy CEO Angela Castro surprise Mackenzie.
Good morning, Angela Castro, one of the deputy CEOs here at the RTC. Joining me today is Jacob Sanders. Say hi.
Hi.
And we are so excited because today we get to recognize one of our very own as a superstar of the quarter. Her name is Mackenzie Combs Emery, and she is absolutely amazing. She's extremely creative, and she loves to connect. She's empathetic, she's passionate, she's driven. And Jacob is going to tell you why she's being recognized as our superstar of the quarter this month.
Mackenzie is amazing, and she was the project manager for the RTC's 30th anniversary press conference. She worked with a mix of RTC departments and external partners to pull together a phenomenal press conference that was attended by elected officials and local media.
So come on, guys, let's go surprise Mackenzie right now. We are here to surprise you because you are... Congratulations, you're a superstar of the quarter. Mackenzie, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your dedication, for your commitment to our community, for being absolutely amazing. You're an amazing team player. Everyone loves you. There's not one person out there who does not like you, does not enjoy working with you. So you're absolutely amazing. And we, on behalf of Team RTC, just want to say thank you.
Thanks, guys. Would you just the hair or something a little bit more? Thank you so much to my amazing team at the RTC. I love you guys so much. I am not one for surprises. This was a lovely welcome surprise, and thank you, everyone, to my team. Love the RTC. So, thank you.
Is Mackenzie here? There she is. Great job.
It's a great team. Thanks, Mackenzie. So our next item is a presentation for Francis Julian. It's an overview of RTC's paratransit service. We thought since we have some new commissioners, it might be nice just to do a paratransit 101 presentation. So I'll turn it over to Francis.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Francis Julian. Good morning, members of the board. So I'll be providing an overview of what we do in paratransit. So the RTC provides services which is a reservation-based, shared ride, door-to-door service available to customers who are physically or cognitively unable to independently use the RTC transit system. This service operates just like fixed route 24 hours a day, 365 days a year within the urbanized area of Clark County. If using paratransit, a customer can call up to three days ahead to schedule a ride. Or a much more convenient option is our paratransit app, also known as My RTC App. In fiscal year 2022, over 95,000 of our total paratransit booking came from My RTC App. Paratransit rides are costing $3 each way, and certified paratransit customers can actually ride fixed route or transit for free. Here's the transit system map. So the paratransit service operate within a specified service area. This area is determined using the FTA guidelines, which states that this transit agency must provide a level of service that is comparable to what is available on our transit system. The hours and days of operation must be the same as the transit system, and service must be provided to origins and destination within three quarters of a mile of any fixed route services. As you can see, the paratransit service does not cover the entire Las Vegas Valley. So those dots are basically customers that was back in 2019 that are outside the service area. Prior to the 2021 service change, we had 196 certified paratransit customers that had to make their way inside the service area to benefit from the service. Fast forward to this year. Since then, we expanded the transit service and the paratransit service area as well. Due to this expansion, we went from 196 paratransit customers living outside of our service area to 24 customers now having to make their way into the service area to benefit from our service. Once again, this is showing the importance of investing in public transit. The key takeaway here is that when we invest in our public transit and the expansion of our network, it also benefits paratransit customers. Individuals interested in applying to become certified for paratransit must request an application from the RTC Certification Office. Disability alone does not determine eligibility, but is based on one's ability to use a transit system. While a customer's eligibility may be determined by application alone, there are situations where an in-person functional ability assessment is required. If individuals are required to go through the assessment, the RTC will provide complimentary transportation to and from their appointment. The pandemic and subsequent stay-at-home orders obviously impacted our service and decreased ridership. We continue to work on returning to pre-pandemic service level. As we can see, in 2019, ridership was just over 1.3 million passenger trip. Fast forward to 2022, and we're about at 1.1 million passenger rides, which puts us at over 88% of our pre-pandemic numbers. As paratransit ridership started to come back from the pandemic, the RTC, like many other industries, found that we were experiencing a driver shortage. At the end of fiscal 2021, paratransit had 76% of the driver needed to perform our service. Fast forward to this month, we are currently operating with 96% of the driver needed for service, and our contractor continued to host new hire classes to improve our numbers. I want to thank MV and all the drivers for that really hard year of labor shortage that we went through. To supplement our paratransit service, the RTC Paratransit Contractor MV partnered with the rideshare company Userv to provide an added mobility option that complements the ADA paratransit service. Riders who often can expect either an RTC paratransit, Userv, paratransit vehicle, or a Userv private vehicle arrive during their scheduled pickup window for their paratransit ride. Since we launched in 2022, we provided more than 24,000 trips with this service. In addition to Userv, we offer additional paratransit service in partnership with Lyft and TangleCar called Paratransit Ride on Demand that services the whole paratransit service area. With this service, we provided more than 35,000, almost 36,000 rides last year. We also provide supplemental service for veterans and seniors. In fiscal year 2022, we provided more than over 80,000 seniors and veteran rides and mobility training to 190 seniors and students. We offer our Silver Star program consisting of 12 routes around the valley. Silver Star is a loop route transit service, providing transportation to stop near senior community centers, various shopping locations, including grocery stores. Silver Star passengers can use any of our transit pass for boarding or pay 50 cents to board. The Veteran Medical Transportation Network, otherwise known as VMTN, is designed to assist veterans with free transportation services to VA-approved medical appointments. Eligible veterans may receive a free monthly transit pass to use the RTC transit system or paratransit service if they are paratransit certified. The RTC also offers free mobility training to help our senior citizens, students, and persons with disability to learn how to use the RTC transit service safely and properly. Mobility training is meant to help develop the skills and confidence needed to travel independently. The time spent training is customized to fit individual needs. An RTC instructor will spend as much or as little time as needed to get a customer to the point where they're comfortable traveling independently. For both our veterans and seniors, RTC offers a 50% discount on transit fares. Veterans and seniors can obtain a reduced fare ID card at either our Bonneville Transit Center or at the RTC admin building. Finally, in 2012, the RTC and the State of Nevada Division of Healthcare Finance and Policy partnered to provide paratransit transportation services to Medicaid recipients who are eligible for non-emergency transportation services and who are also paratransit certified. Each quarter, the RTC submits a paratransit ride provided to Medicaid customers for subsequent reimbursement. On average, the RTC provides nearly 300,000 rides to Medicare customers annually. RTC was reimbursed over $7.5 million for fiscal year '22 for medical rides. This concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
Francis Keltner?
Thank you for the presentation. I was curious, outside of how many people voluntarily go through the eligibility criteria to become eligible for a paratransit, do we know what the percentage of our population that would be eligible?
It's on a case-by-case basis. So there are some cases where we have customers with their existing condition. We don't even ask them to come to the certification location, just with the medical assessments we know. If not, it's on a case basis, but we can definitely look and try to see what kind of percentage, and we'll come back to you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman.
You don't need to go through me.
Couple of questions. One, do you work as the RTC paratransit work with realtors and developers as they're bringing in new people into our population? Do you make them available on a regular basis for meetings of information?
So we're always, our team, we have an outreach team that meets, and we do meet with realtors and developers when there's seniors community, senior community that are being built. We absolutely meet with them. And we actually go to those senior centers to provide services, so either to help them be comfortable using the transit services or to see if they don't need certification.
And my second question is about wheelchair and guide dogs, guide animals. What is the provision there? Is that automatic? And who is lifting if we are providing vehicular assistance for the wheelchair?
So all our vehicles, either on fixed route or paratransit, are wheelchair accessible. So in our paratransit vehicles, we have multiple, just like the fixed route, we have multiple wheelchair location, and service animals are welcome in all the services that the RTC provides.
Thank you.
And just following up on the mayor's comments with regards to new developments and senior developments, the one remaining cluster for paratransit is Anthem. I know we all went up there last year and had that discussion about what existing services there are up there, and there was discussions of consolidating some of the services we do have. But certainly, as we're looking at our expansion of lines for this next year, I would ask that Anthem be considered in that discussion.
Thank you. Great.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. That was a good presentation. You know, recently, because of changes here with my own family member, my auntie, right now, of course, my uncle's able to drive her around. But the day will come where, you know, I mean, he's 79 years old now. The day's going to come where he's not going to be driving. And so I'm acutely aware that, interestingly enough, my auntie might be needing to actually access these routes. Anyhow, I guess what I'm getting at is two questions. Number one, how friendly are our services for people who haven't crossed the digital divide? You know, there's still a significant portion of our population that, you know, they have not. And it's not like, you know, you would think that everyone has access, you know, to doing things online. I myself, I try to do things old-fashioned way because I'm kind of old-fashioned. I'm pretty old-school. But that's the first question. And the second one is Spanish outreach. How, what kind of efforts are we making to, of course, get this out into the Latino community? And probably there's other, you know, enclaves. We have a significant, you know, African community not too far away from here, right? And I'm wondering, you know, what are we doing to reach out to these different communities to make sure that they know they have access to these?
Great, great question. So for the first question, you do not need a computer to order rides. We have a call center, so people can actually call, speak with a representative that works for the RTC that are really well-versed and know the system. For the second, the second question, we do an outreach call senior on the go. So we actually go to a lot of the community centers to explain the services, and we do pop-up events. So we're more than welcome if there's any area to go and bring the team and do presentations on the services that are offered.
Very good. Ms. Maynard?
And Councilman Tisono, Angela and her team do a really good job of ensuring that when we go out, it's that we're multilingual and that we are, we work directly with the community partners, specific thing areas that we know we need to get in there and ensure that they're aware of all of our services.
And of course, I can testify for the fact they've gone to several Latino things that I do. I just wasn't aware that, of course, we were getting this particular message out. It just, again, you don't know, until it actually strikes you. You know, sometimes you're not really aware, you know. I'm always, I'm always very happy, like, to show up at the Broad Acres Swap Meet whenever I know that RTC is there, and I do everything I can to promote that. But sometimes there's other parts, you know, of what we do at the RTC that, again, you know, doesn't immediately come to mind until you need it.
Thank you. Ms. Maynard?
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to receive the Nevada-
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Sure, I'm sorry.
So back to that issue, do we pay some kind of a bonus or something for bilingual employees?
So there is provision for the call center to, there is, there is an extra layer of pay for bilingual in the call center.
But how about the drivers?
Well, I'll, I'll check with the contractor and come back with you.
Very good. Madam Manager, I'm going to ask that we go out of order and move to the consent agenda. We do have some members of the board who may need to leave, so I want to make sure that they have the train to vote before we go to the end.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks, Chairman. Well, then, I'll ask you, the next item is to approve the consent agenda items. They consist of five through 29. It can be taken in one motion.
Right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Congratulations to our new contractor. Very exciting.
And we can talk to everyone now?
Yeah.
Talk away. Just don't do it with three other members of the board present, because, you know, that's a problem. All right, go back to, we'll go back to item number four.
All right, thanks, Chairman. So the next item will be received, the Nevada Department of Transportation's Director's Report. It's going to be done virtually by Darren Tedford.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me just fine?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Darren Tedford, Deputy Director of NDOT. Director Larkin Thomason's feeling a little under the weather today, so she asked me to step in. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'd like to, before I start, I'd like to say I listened to the Regional Flood Control District meeting and the mayor's comments about notifications south of our southern border into California. I will work with Caltrans and with our Traffic Operations Group to see what kind of notification we can encourage Caltrans to provide to our, either our own residents or people coming to visit the state. So we'll get back to you on what we can find out on that topic. And I'd also like to say, I love those stories of the RTC team members and the Keolis members. And, man, I'd like to be that guy, Noah, driving down the road on a bus and intercept some unsavory activities that might have occurred. I appreciate that guy totally inspiring. Next slide, please. Sorry, next slide after that. There we go. So our safety slide for the month is about NDOT hosting Nevada Moves Month. This month, our Safe Routes to School Program coordinators are hosting safe walking and biking to school events as well as other organized physical activity in schools statewide. The goal is not only to engage Nevada schoolchildren in healthy physical activity, but to start family and community dialogues about pedestrian and bicycle safety. We encourage families also to plan their own Nevada Moves activities, perhaps a family walk to school or a weekend bicycle ride. While they're at it, we hope it will spur a deeper understanding and awareness of pedestrian safety. Next slide. And the one after that, there we go. Southern Nevada has, as you all know, had a particularly wet winter, keeping all the maintenance crews and down there busy, including NDOT crews and our Olive District One. When snowstorms hit, you know, our crews are out there on the roads around Mount Charleston particularly, but also up and over 160 out to Perump, where you've seen some pretty significant snowfall down there. Doesn't happen very often, but we've also assisted the NAP several times, closing I-15 South going into California. So whether it's snow or flood waters, we're on the lookout for keeping everyone, all of our travelers, safe down there.
We just all appreciate that the photo that's on there, the description of the vehicle is Cert de Snow Lay. Very creative.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Thank you. That was an outreach program that we put together and got suggestions from the community, got lots of suggestions, ranked them, and designated three of our snowplows, one in each district, with a name chosen by the resident. So, yes, we appreciated that submission also. Thank you. Next slide, please. All right, project updates. First, Tropicana. We're well into phase two of construction on this slide, basically. And if you've driven through the construction zone, you realize that the yellow section going left to right is the current area under construction. When we closed I-15, this is the half of the bridge that we took down. And so that is being reconstructed now. That work is well underway to rebuild the north half. The new bridge will be taller, longer, and wider with additional capacity over I-15. Upcoming work also includes lane shifts on I-15 as our construction crews start to build a new half interchange on the south side of Harmon. For now, Tropicana is a diverging diamond interchange. You can see the green and blue lines crossing there. That's where traffic is currently located. We realize that there's been a bit of a challenge with the public settling into this temporary, but until the fall, it'll be the configuration of traffic going back and forth across this road, the existing old bridge. We're continually monitoring the traffic going across there and trying to address any challenges that the traffic has with making it through the work zone. So the phase three will include another full closure of Tropicana and I-15 to demolish the south side of the bridge. That is anticipated beginning of the year of next year. And obviously, coordination is ongoing with all the stakeholders, all the events. We also encourage anyone that's interested to look at a public information video that we put out about diverging diamond interchanges and how they function. That's on our Twitter site, Nevada DOT Vegas. Next slide, please. All right, Charleston Interchange. We're about eight months into this project already. Last month's crews placed new girders over Stewart, Mojave, and Pecos. These girders will eventually hold the widened I-515 95 Bridge and provide additional capacity around the Charleston Curve towards eastern. This month, we initiated our first of four long-term ramp closures. The ramp from Charleston to northbound I-15 will be closed until the first week of April. All four of these ramps will be closed in 30-day segments, so our crews can rebuild and redesign the full interchange. Again, our website for this one contains all of our updates and our schedule for closures is I515Charleston.com. And I believe that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tedford. Any questions? Mr. Ross, Chair?
Just one quick question. In northern Nevada, we were given a presentation where there was a rockslide that cut through that little canyon. I might be seeing my kids here next week, and I'm wondering if that ever got fixed.
Yes, thank you for the question. That emergency contract is underway. I have impressive pictures, but none ready to present. But currently, our traffic- But currently, our traffic control through the canyon is during the morning commute times and the evening commute times where pilot car, one lane in each direction, I'm sorry, one lane with pilot car operation through that work zone, and the contractors continuing to clean that up. The slide that went about three hundred feet up the hill contained boulders that make our excavators look like toy cars. So we're working on removing the bigger of that material from the road. But during the commute hours in the morning and the evening, there is access, and then there's a detour otherwise. It'll take you, if you're coming from the south, a detour will take you up three ninety-five into Carson City, out to Yerington on Highway fifty, and back down.
Any other comments? Mr.?
Yes, since our last meeting, I think there's been at least one more of the wrong-way drivers on the freeway. So I'm not sure if there's any way we can expedite it, but I think we just stop studying it and figure out, let's start putting in some type of a block so people can't go the wrong way. It just seems to be an epidemic.
Yes, I can report that we have completed classification of every interchange in the state, and that classification identified what type of right way, oh, right way, what type of wrong-way driver system is appropriate for that interchange. We realized that we have pretty typical interchanges in the state, and we have some that are not typical at all. And so we've identified what's needed for each of them. We've begun installing where there haven't been wrong-way driver systems before, and we've begun replacing where the system that there either isn't supported or is outdated, so that it's not meeting the needs of the interchange. Those are being spread around the state in the highest priority locations. And as you said, every time there's a wrong-way driver, the risk of serious injury to that driver, but also the regular traveling public is severe, just because of the head-on. And so we're working to address the highest priority interchanges we can identify and spread those systems statewide.
Perhaps in the next meeting, the director could present an update on the wrong-way drivers. And I would just say, since seventy-three percent of the population is located in southern Nevada, that we certainly deserve high consideration as priority down here.
Absolutely, and we're happy to include that information.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Tedford. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman, thank you. Item thirty is to receive information from our legal counsel. As there are no items to discuss, we can move on to the last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to matters before the RTC, please step forward to the microphone, or we can bring a microphone to you if necessary, and keep your comments to three minutes. I know we have a comment up at the top. Dorothy Barnes? She turned it over to, yeah, mostly to Francis, yeah.
Morning. Okay. Good morning, all. I'm sixty-five years old. I'll be sixty-six, so forgive me if I don't speak the right thing. I don't even know where I am sometime with this trouble that's. I don't always mean to bring complaints to you all. I like to bring suggestions and recommendations I have in the past meetings, but I've been struggling trying to get to these meetings. And with my handicap these days, it's a little, I'm a little slow. But I want to be concerned about safety on the buses. Last night, there was a fight on the BHX bus. A gentleman slapped a guy a couple of times, and I was concerned about his pregnant wife. Well, she tried to stop him from fighting, and he wanted to fight him back. And she didn't want her husband to fight him back. So he got off the bus. I was glad. I prayed all the demons off the bus because they're sad that people can't ride the bus and be getting into it. But this comes from all this lying that's going on on the bus. I'm very concerned about the people lying on me. That's why I ended up in a handicap like this. They lied me onto a rolader, God knows, and conditions. They just lie, lie, lie. The line has to stop. I'm trying to get some control. I recommend them to sign this promissory note. They can go on Ellis, on my ticket, Dorothy Barnes. Sign this promissory note. I'm making a suggestion and recommendation. But it's just like if the doctor gave you a prescription and told you to take it three times a day. If you don't do it, you know, it's on you. But I don't want to see people getting stabbed, shot on the buses, and my safety as well as others, and the drivers especially too, because that incident that happened last night was one prime example of violence on the bus between passengers. And it's very sad that that went on last night, and so I hope it doesn't go on again. I recommend they sign this promissory note when urgent war, not just looking at the war between Russia and the Ukrainians. There's wars right here, little wars and stuff going on in Vegas. And I came back here and making my home and to move away a year and a half, and I moved back here. And well, only for the best, but there's a lot of stuff. I'd like to say I don't want to bring all the complaints and stuff, but that's my suggestion and recommendation. Everybody sign this promissory note. It's like a peace treaty. Yeah, it's like a peace treaty. Thank you all for your time. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment?
Hi, my name is Sharon Floyd, and I've been told to come here several times, but unable to make it. I have been disabled, unfortunately, for a couple of years due to spinal surgery. I have been embarrassed, degraded, humiliated for riding the bus. The drivers shut the doors on me. I had walkers with me, shut the doors, won't let me in, waved goodbye to me. It's humiliating. And recently, I have been on the bus to the 106th to Centennial Hills, and when I got to the top, I was asked to remove myself from the bus because there's no round-trip tickets. I have a weekly pass. Every week, I pay cash for it. I'm not on any disability cheap tickets or anything, and I see no reason for people to treat us like that. There's foul, vulgar music playing that the drivers do not make them shut off. It's embarrassing as a woman to listen to this horrible, horrific stuff coming out about women and vulgar stuff. It needs to stop. People with guns on the buses, people attacking senior citizens. It's absurd. And I choose to ride the bus. I have a driver's license. I don't want to drive under the influence of anything. So I choose to ride the bus. You need to please make it safer. And I should not have to keep turning in events that I'm just so embarrassed to even talk about, that drivers treat us like everybody is a degrading person. So please help us. And I came, I didn't realize it was the RTC. I thought it was possibly I could speak to a county commissioner about the pandemic of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment?
Yes, my name is Margaret Coleman. I know you're talking about RTC, but I would like to talk about the auction cars that's being issued out. They make it seem like it is a one-year deal.
Ms. Coleman, this is an RTC meeting, so keep your comments to RTC matters, please.
This is important, and you need to know. I'm being followed behind for that car, and I'm being persecuted, and I don't like that. So you need to do something about that, these auction cars they're selling to the people. And it's transportation as well. And I'm not speaking just for myself. A lot of the people that's on the streets who lost their car were going to jail, and then people buying them, and they're up behind us. So you must pay attention to that, please, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? We have one over here.
Good morning. Ooh, this loud. I don't know if I'm in the right place, but I wanted to make a comment about the paratransit. Is that okay?
Yep, go ahead.
I want to just say that I am very grateful for paratransit. I think, and also other clients that use it. I appreciate the updates that you all have done, or I think since COVID, with the online drop-off and pickup and drop-off. Sorry, I'm rambling. I'm kind of nervous talking to a bunch of professionals. I think that I really like the, well, we really like the pickup window, the thirty-minute pickup window. However, the drop-off time could be a little more friendly to the clients. A half, hour and a half for a drop-off to the, hour and a half to two hours to their drop-off time is a bit excessive, I think, we think. And so we was wondering if you could maybe look into it to solve it. I tried to kind of do it myself because I'm like the other lady. I don't like complaining. But when I, when the issues came up with my son, I did the comment on the website. I did a detailed comment so that the people could know exactly what I was talking about and what my situation was. But the only response that I got from it was a summary, a two-sentence summary of what I commented about. Like I said, I really like the updates with the drop-off, but for some reason, I go to do just the drop-off rather than the pickup because I want my son to be at the, at the daycare, the adult daycare at a Pacific time because that's when they start off, and he's not there that long. So I do the drop-off. But it's like they're not honoring it at this time. They, and I think it's due to the drivers not aware of this, or they are aware, but they are forgetting to look at the complete schedule of the log. I think that's what you call it on a screen.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and follow up with you if that's okay.
Oh, I'm too long? My three minutes up? I'm sorry.
It's all good. No, we'll definitely follow up with you. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.